Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm calling the meeting to order. And before we begin, I will ask the town manager to announce the protocols.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To begin, I ask everyone, ensure their phone is on silent. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the town's YouTube. For those in the room, it is important that you remain quiet unless participating in the discussion. If you're participating in the discussions, be quietly into your microphone. For those on Zoom, it is important that you keep your camera off and microphone muted unless participating in the discussion. If you are participating in the discussion, please unmute yourself and turn on your camera. If you are a resident who would like to make a comment, please use the raise hand feature. Your speaker is both in person and over Zoom. Please state your name and the street that you live on for record keeping purposes before you make your comments. If this meeting gets interrupted for any reason, I will immediately end the Zoom and send a new LinkedIn email. And now I can invite you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. The next item is consideration of the agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to amend it.
Well, first.
Let's have the motion out.
Well, what you could do is you could approve, you could make a motion to approve it with the following change.
I make a motion to approve the agenda with this change, which is to add a private tree removal as item E under five or two birch trees at fifty-four twelve Trent Street. Dr. Feather has more details about them.
Okay, is there a second? Is there discussion?
You, I have an amendment as well.
Well, let's get, let's just get off the table first.
Okay, so now it's discussion. So you, what amendment do you want to present?
Yes, I'd like to have an amendment in respect to item nine, consideration of a proposal for construction of a pool fence. I am obviously very glad that we have been to discuss it, but I am concerned that we have not really provided adequate time for public input, having only received the proposal.
So your motion is true.
My motion is to drop this from the agenda for today and request a special council meeting.
Okay.
Hopefully within next week.
Okay, well, wait, wait. So your amendment is to remove it. Is there a second? So it fails for a second. Is there further discussion on the, you can, you can bring it up when it comes up. So all those in favor of the agenda as, and with the one change?
Aye.
All those, thank you. Okay, we will now move to the public comment period. I guess there's nobody on Zoom. The next item is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
I heard the president. Is there, and I think, did you, you? Second was Councilor Kumar. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you. The next item, consideration of the following recommendations by town arborist Dr. Talbot Feather to remove the town trees located in fifty-five twenty Greystone, fifty-five twenty-three Warwick, forty-eight oh six Essex, fifty-seven oh six Surrey, and forty-five eighteen Cumberland. Welcome, Dr. Feather.
Thank you, the mayor. Fifty-five twenty Greystone is a red maple thirty-inch diameter and the center of the tree is dead and it has lots of hollows in the, in the main trunk. So it's hazardous. Do you want me to just go through all of them?
Yeah, why don't you do it?
Fifty-five twenty three Warwick, place with small dog, little stem, forty-eight oh six Essex. It's a red oak.
That's okay.
Fifty-seven oh six Surrey is a red maple, this dead. And forty-five eighteen Cumberland is the tree right down the street here. And it's has decaying ball of the world branches connect. As your resident pointed out, to do some work on this tree and I looked at it and decided, you know, it's hazardous, so I'd like to have them to pick that up. That's all the.
And that concludes your report?
Yeah, that's all the public.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, President Bar, do you have any questions?
None. I just wouldn't like to be that small car underneath the tree at Greystone. That's all.
That's mine.
That's what I thought.
You'll see though, the ones.
Yeah. So Councilor, hello, she's not. Councilor Kumar, do you have any questions?
Just, you know, have you, I know these are public town trees, but haven't you informed the residents that this is going to happen?
Um, no, I usually, well, I haven't been lately, but I like to post them. This is where everybody else.
We were doing that more religiously. We try again.
There are a couple of these are requests, but yeah.
Just as an FII, so they know it's not a surprise. Yeah, that would be good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rovac.
I have no questions.
Thank you, Councilor Khan.
No, no questions.
Okay, council, you're prepared to make a motion. Oh, is there, are there any comments from? Council, you're prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, I move that we approve the tree removals, public tree removals recommended by Dr. Feather at Greystone Warwick Essex, Surrey and Cumberland indicated.
Is there a second?
Second.
I heard Khan first. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, thank you. The next item is consideration of the following private tree removal applications, and we'll just take them one by one because, because it's.
Right, right.
Request. Right. The first one is the tree removal permit application submitted by Arcana Gregerson for the property located at forty-six oh three Dorset.
This is the first tree of heaven we had to remove on prior methods. Tree of heaven is an invasive species. Although this is pretty large, it grows, it's a pretty large tree, twenty-three inches. And they are the primary attractive for spotted landings life. And the reason this tree was singled out is the neighbor has like a playground for a banjo underneath the tree on her side. And it's completely filled with sooty mold. This, this seems to have been, I mean, we haven't even had that epidemic infestation yet. And then the, the neighbor loans the tree, it's breached, we removed it. And I recommend that we will just, it's invasive and also attracts the spotted landings. Now, this one, we need a little bit of a, we need an extension on the removal. But to effectively remove these, you need to treat the tree while it's alive. And that's good state recommend doing that in July. And then when the tree dies, you cut it down. If you do, if you cut it down alive, there's sprouts, sprouts everywhere around. The idea would be to take this down in July or in December of twenty-six. That concludes my report.
Thank you, council. President Bar, do you have any questions?
Are there other trees of heaven growing in the town or in the woods?
Yes, there, I'm gonna, I'm, there's some on Dorset, right? Right at the intersection. There's a whole clump of them. There's like twenty of them, different sizes. And I was getting proposed to remove those. One of the residents wanted them, or wanted one removed by her home earlier this summer, and then I started looking and it was all from them. So I'm gonna present that to the council this winter and see what, what you all thought about.
All right, well, it sounds like it would be a good idea, so. I'm commed, anyway. All right. No other questions on this one.
Thank you, Councilor Kumar.
None for me, thank you.
Councilor Rovac.
No questions.
Councilor Khan.
No questions.
Boy, Fred's asked, is the applicant, she's not here, right?
No.
Okay. Council, you're prepared to make a motion?
Yes. I propose that we approve the tree removal permit application submitted by our chairman Gregerson for the property located at fifty-six oh three and allow up to a year for its removal.
Second.
Okay, is there discussion?
You said forty-six oh?
Oh, I didn't.
Is there, is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you. Next item, the tree removal permit application submitted by Jill Gibson and Terrence Johnson for the property located at forty-seven zero eight Dorset. Dr. Feather.
It's a holly tree, nineteen inch diameter. It's ninety percent dead. And it won't re-drive, but I recommend removal. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, council. President Bar, do you have any questions?
No questions on that one.
Councilor Kumar?
No, none for me, thank you.
Councilmember Rovac?
No questions.
Councilor Khan?
No questions. Oh, I forget. Is the applicant here?
Council, are you ready to make a motion?
Yes. Move that we approve the tree removal permit requested by Jill Gibson, Terrence Johnson for the property located at forty-seven oh eight Dorset for the holly tree that is virtually dead.
Is there a second?
Second.
I agree. Kumar, is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you. The next item is the removal application for, by Melissa and Alan Davidson for the property located forty-seven twenty-seven Essex.
This is the pin oak in the backyard, thirty-four inch diameter, seventy-five percent dead with large pieces of dead, large dead branches and a glomonti bar, I recommend removal. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And the Davidson's, okay. Council, President Bar, do you have any questions?
Only, was there anything that could have been done to save the tree, say, two years ago or something like that?
No. Yeah, we're losing trees in size all the time.
All right, all right. No other questions.
Thank you, Councilor Kumar.
No questions.
Councilor Rovac.
Um, well, so I don't think we really got anywhere with that fee, but there's a fifty dollar fee on it. But I thought we were gonna maybe look to remove that, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's just leftover from.
Before.
From the board, so we won't charge.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, no, I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Councilor Khan. Do you have any questions? And there's no one. Thank you. Council, you're prepared to make a motion?
Yes. I propose we approve the tree removal permit application submitted by Melissa and Alan Davidson for, at forty-seven twenty-seven Essex for the dead, almost dead pin oak, seventy-five percent dead.
Thank you. Is there a second?
With, with no fee?
With no fee, yes.
Okay, I second.
Okay, is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you. The next item, by the way, we wouldn't have the authority to charge the fee anyway, but thank you all of you for noticing that. The next item is the consideration of the pre-removal application submitted by Frank and Catherine Mullins for the property located at fifty-five ten Uppingham. Dr. Feather.
Fifty-five ten Uppingham is a magnolia or thirty inch diameter and it's dead. And I recommend removal. That concludes my report.
Thank you, council. I take it the. Council, President Bar, do you have any questions?
No question.
Councilmember Kumar?
No question.
Councilor Rovac?
No questions.
Councilor Khan?
No questions.
Council, you're prepared to make a motion?
Yep, I propose that we approve the tree removal permit application submitted by Frank and Catherine Mullins at fifty-five ten Uppingham for the dead magnolia tree there.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I heard Kumar first. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed.
Council, I mean, there's that one, added one. There's that one.
Oh, yeah, did you write down here?
Oh, and then the extra tree?
It's the for fifty-four twelve Trent Street. And who were the applicants?
Barbara Zookhauser.
Oh, Barbara. Barbara Zookhauser.
She's there.
Oh, she's there. Oh, excellent. Councilmember Zookhauser. Okay, Dr. Feather.
There's two birch trees at fifty-four twelve Trent Street, uh, requested for removal. One's, uh, they're multi-stem, one's twenty-seven inches in the base. The tree had a crack between the main branches of the base for decay and it's hazardous. The other one is thirty inches at the base and the tree has decayed base gray. Rim was removed at one time and starting rubbing underneath the base. It's also hazardous. I recommend removal of oak trees.
Okay, thank you. Does the applicant wish to address the council? Welcome, Director, Councilmember Zookhauser.
Uh, no.
Do you wish, do you wish to add, do you wish to add anything?
Only that I think that the, the meeting room looks so beautiful with Claudia's paintings.
Okay, so noted. Did you wanna, did you wanna add anything about the urgency, so just for the record?
We have.
Go on. Um, no, the, the, we planted these trees almost thirty years ago. They've grown. And we very much like them, but the, we, we're very concerned about the one that's overhanging the house. And the other one is, it's just been crowded out by, it's part of a, a group of five birch trees that we planted. It's overcrowded and dying. I think it's actually maybe dead.
Excellent, thank you. It's good to have this in the record, as you can understand. Council, President Bar, do you have any questions?
No questions on this one.
Councilor Kumar?
No questions.
Councilor Rovac?
No questions.
Councilor Khan?
No questions.
And I take it there's no. Ca, ca, council, you're prepared to make a motion?
Yes. I propose we approve the tree removal request from Barbara Zookhauser for the two birch trees identified at fifty-four twelve Trent Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
I heard Kumar first, but is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed. Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Feather.
Thank you, Dr. Feather. Thank you, council members and, and Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. The next item is consideration of an ordinance to require a real property sale disclosure regarding town regulations. Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, the council has discussed this potential ordinance at other council meetings and work sessions. Basically, what the ordinance would do is require the use of the disclosure form, the form perspectives, new residents Somerset specific regulations and procedures separate from Montgomery County. A signed copy of this disclosure would have to be given to the town so that we are aware, that new residents are aware of the regulations. But it concludes my report.
And I would like to ask the town attorney if he wanted to add anything?
Um, no, Mr. Mayor, other than I just noticed, we also have a companion disclosure form that we would provide to GCAR with the adoption of this ordinance, so that we were proposing an actual form for their use. And the council has seen that. It, it basically just cuts in pace from the proposed code language into a, a form that Realtors can use. And so the, the council would be approving that tonight as well. And there's been no change to that since the last time the council saw it.
So, so what you're saying is that the council is approving the law and the form that is to be submitted to GCAR, which.
That's right.
The GCAR is the Greater Capital Area Association of Realtors. And so, and so, so do you, do you happen to know what their process is? Because it's my understanding that now it has to be submitted to them and then it goes through a process there.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
That's my understanding as well, Mr. Mayor. And I, I don't know how long that takes. I know that the town of Chevy Chase and Garrett Park, I believe, have, have both done this and, and GCAR has, as far as I know, prepared forms for those two jurisdictions.
So if there, if there are any cha, if, if, if there, because actually I used to chair that committee over there years ago. So, so if there are any, if they, if they make any changes, don't they have to bring that back to our council?
Yes. Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure they would. I wouldn't expect any changes to the substance because the law is the law, but
Right.
certainly they may have some, some stylistic edits or edits in the way it's presented. And I, I'm sure they would let us know.
Because, so what might be good for you to obtain, if you could, is the, is the final addendum for the other municipalities, so we can at least see what just for added information. I think it'd be good if we all had a chance to look at that in case questions arise or something. We can discuss it in a work session, but I think it's pretty boilerplate. Ho, hopefully, hopefully it all go right through. And if necessary, we can just, but, but I do, I, you know, I'm, having been in that world, I am so and knowing about all the problems that have been created when Realtors do not know that, that the property is in the town of Somerset and there are so many aspects of our code that are different than what they're used to, what they're familiar with in the county. I think this is really a brilliant move, and I do thank Councilor Khan for coming up with the idea. Council, President Bar, do you have any questions?
No, I mean, we've been through this one quite a bit already, so I have no questions.
Thank you, Councilor Kumar.
No questions.
Councilor Rovac?
I have no questions.
And sir, the author?
Questions, you already asked my question regarding process, so it's good to know that. So it will be now the town manager and the town attorney will shepherd it to GCAR? Is that how it works?
Oh, look, council. Council, Member Heller has arrived. You can, you, you can.
Come join us.
Come join, welcome.
Tonight.
Welcome, welcome. So, so are there any?
No questions.
Do you, do you, Councilmember Heller, we're in the, it's okay.
Just walking airplane.
Did you happen to have, and thank you for rushing over
Yeah.
for this important meeting. Did you happen to have, we're in the middle of discussing the the, the legislation to require a real property sale disclosure. Did you happen to have any questions on that?
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Are there any comments? Council, you're prepared to make a motion?
Yes, a move that we.
Why don't, why don't?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I, I make a motion to adopt the ordinance regarding the, to require real property sale disclosure regarding town regulations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes, sir.
I, I'm sorry, I was typing the email to GCAR. Did you ask for public comment already?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I did. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
Is there discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you. And as you know, just like every law that's written in our code, it can be amended, so. So we'll see how it goes. And it might, it might be that once it's put into practice, there might be some things needing to be added in the future. I remember that the, having worked with the Rockville Addendum and the Gethysburg Addendum for many years, I know that it was constantly being changed. So, so this is really good to get a foothold into this. The next item is consideration of an ordinance to adopt a new chapter regarding landlord tenant relations and require, and to require a lease addendum regarding town regulations. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance is very similar to the previous one, except it's for renters rather than buyers. And then, Ron, do you have anything to mention about this ordinance?
No, yeah, here for public hearing as well. And this is similar to the real estate disclosure, but would cover rental situations rather than real estate transfers.
So I just had a little bit of a brainstorm, which I think is that once the, we should ask to GCAR that once the they, they decide on these disclose, you know, what the final form is going to be, did there be some opportunity to communicate to Realtors through, through, you know, one of their conferences or meetings or something? So I think, I think we should rely on the staff to work closely with GCAR so that because I know that all organizations have a problem getting information out to members. They get, they get so much in there. And maybe we might want to have something, we might want to invite Realtors at some point to come to a, a, a meeting to review all this, so that they can explain it to their clients. Uh, council, President Bar, do you have any questions?
No, no questions again. We discussed this one previously.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kumar?
Questions, thank you.
Councilor Rovac?
No questions.
And Councilmember?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. So Councilmember Khan, are you prepared to make a motion?
I guess this is a cousin of the previous one.
Yes.
Yeah, so I propose a motion to adopt a new chapter regarding landlord tenant relations and require a lease addendum regarding town regulations.
Is there a second?
Second, yeah.
Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. The next item, oh, and we're just barely, we're running nineteen minutes ahead. This is fine. The next item is consideration of proposal for snow removal and ice remediation services. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In mid-September of twenty twenty-five, the town of Somerset issued an RFP for snow removal and ice remediation services for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, and twenty twenty-seven. And then the RFP was closed in mid-October. The town received three total bids, Moheran Tree Experts, Rolling Eaters Landscaping, and Digital Career Opportunities Worldwide. I compared the three based on cost, qualification, quality of references, familiarity of Somerset, and sustainable procurement. And through those rankings, primarily based on prior experience, how local the company is and the costs, I'm recommending Moheran Tree Experts. For cost, they're far cheaper than the other two options. As a direct comparison, one ton truck of plow is eighty dollars an hour with Moheran compared to one hundred and eighty, and then compared to two hundred. And then all the, the two other, others have sort of not hidden fees, but extra fees that aren't present with Moheran. Moheran has also served as the contractor for the service for the last several winters. Works with municipal clients, including Somerset, and is based nearby Kensington. Ed Moheran, Moheran Tree Experts is here, and so.
Sir, do you want to come? And let's test to make sure.
Yes, sir.
Test the, please introduce yourself to see. Can everybody hear? Mr. Town Attorney, can you hear? Okay, so.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Sir, if you would like.
Ron, how you doing, bud?
Doing well, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Mr. Moheran, do you, would you like to comment on, on this or just be prepared to answer questions? Did you want to add anything?
I'm ready to go. All set, as usual.
Okay, excellent. Council, President Bar, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I asked this one last year, but I'll ask it again, which is, when we have ice in town and, but sand is about the only thing that helps there. Do you have access to sand?
The raw material that we use provide by the county and then build to the, to the town and it's not sand, it's salt.
Which doesn't really work enough. Is.
No, it's, but. I suppose I could provide sand if I.
Yeah, I mean, it's when it gets down below eighteen degrees is the problem.
Well, you're, you are correct, so. What, you know, the lower the temperature gets, the less efficient.
Salt is, yes.
Salt in, yes. But still the traction from it. And the deal's always been that the county provides the salt, county charges you guys by the ton, charge you all by the ton to spread it.
But so there is no separate source for sand, which does not, is not affected by temperature.
Yeah, I suppose I have to look into it.
Yeah. Might be an idea. I mean, because we do get these very cold snaps periodically. All right.
So, so do you want, you know, to work with the staff and report back to you?
I would like that, yes.
Okay, you, you got that right. Okay, thank you. Is that your?
That's it.
Councilor Heller, do you have any questions?
In terms of, you know, the asking for sand, when you put down salt, you, you pre-treat the street, I'm assuming, when you know it's, you don't.
Okay.
You put it down when it's happening.
Yes.
And how often are we really in the situation of below eighteen degrees?
I would say generally not very, but like last year, that last event we had, which was in. I would say generally not very, but like last year, that last event we had, which was in February, it was really cold for probably a week to ten days. It was single digits and double digits, you know, so. Every event's different, so you just gotta gauge it. If they're calling for sunny skies and fifty tomorrow, I'm gonna do less than I would if they're calling for, you know, freezing cold temperatures.
But. Yes. Um so. In in terms of. So we we get, when we get these really cold days, we don't necessarily have ice, we just have cold, am I right? And you wouldn't come out and treat? No, unless it's snow. You'd only, you'd only come when it's snowed?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's that's it.
It's all there, I mean, it's just cold.
Uh or sand, you wouldn't put the sand down either, no. So in actuality, we probably wouldn't use a lot of sand over the course of the winter, would we?
Councilor Kumar, do you have any questions?
Um well, I'm just a clarification. Uh manager, um I'm curious about digital career opportunities, because this is decidedly a non-digital service. Do you know where that came from?
I've tried looking through it, it's. It seems like a company.
We have tree experts, lo- rolling acres, and digital career opportunities.
Yeah. It just, it seems to be a, I. From one of the others, they use, they use subcontractors maybe, is what I think probably is why they do.
Well, Councilmember Kumar, I I might have to tell you that I've been managing the snow and ice in the town Somerset for.
And just to clarify, it's a non-digital intervention, I'm pretty sure it's a non-digital, like. You have to physically show up to do it.
And I do.
Yeah.
And uh. As somebody pointed out, my office is in Kensington, my storage yard where all the equipment comes from is a lot closer than that. I'm right behind WSSC in Silver Spring. Probably three miles from here.
Yeah, I know, I I was gonna say during the discussion, but I'll say quickly now that uh I'm, I think the recommendation makes sense to me, given the experience you have with the town. No more questions, am I?
Okay, thank you, Councilor Revak, do you have any questions?
Um yeah, so I think that last year, obviously, was a bigger year. For snow and ice that we've seen. And um I know that there were some residents who were talking about um. You know, kind of at the end of the streets where the plows meet and like having those big giant um snowbanks that won't melt because um it's too cold. Uh. Do you know, like, do we have? Like contingency plans for that for this coming up year where that wouldn't happen as much or we wouldn't be blocking the access to the sidewalks?
Contingency plan, as as it always is, where. It's a duration, it's a type of storm, it's the amount of. Snow or rain or not rain, but you know, like ice or whatever. And generally, the first, the first call is clear the streets, pass the ways, right? And sometimes the the ramps get blocked, sometimes the sidewalks get blocked, and then we come back. If there's a, if there's a significant amount of stuff on. Then we come back in with a snowplow on the front of the truck and only push it, right? So at some point, then you gotta bring in a machine that can pick it up and move it. So that's the second stage, you know? And then the the hand shovel is clear the sidewalks.
And so last year, did we ever have the snow like physically picked up and removed?
Yes.
Saw that happen. Right in front of my house, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Connor, do you have any questions?
Yes, I have, I have a few questions, should I take them one by one?
Yes, please.
So I just want to follow up on the uh the commentary regarding the snow being piled at at the curb ramps. Um I just, I I just, I, what I would like to request. Is that when the snowplow has piled up the snow at the end of the block. Um we should try to remove it from the curb ramps as soon as possible. Because the simple reason, having shoveled the driveways, uh the shovel, shoveled the sidewalks. Pedestrians are basically then faced with a wall of snow at the end of the block. So it's, it's kind of almost pointless, people are in the street then anyways, so. So that's my request is that, you know, if we can have a short, a pretty quick turnaround between the time we plowed, plowed the snow and and cleared the curb ramps.
Again, sir, every event's different.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of timing with uh time of day and temperature. I got this email from last year, which I didn't really appreciate quite frankly, but. You know, I, nobody did anything on my end. To not do was right by the town and clearing the handicap ramps and all that stuff. If it was for, I think it was right down here by the school.
Yeah.
And we immediately corrected it, so. You know, it's not a perfect science.
Yeah, no, I appreciate.
Let me, let me just add something, so just so everybody knows that when there's a big snowstorm, basically. Because I used to do this, but now the town manager does, basically the town manager and Mohairan are on call like for twenty-four hours. So when, when we would get a call about some problem. You you know, we communicated, it's communicated immediately, but it just depends on like where the trucks happen to be at the time. And just like, I mean, and every, honestly, every snowstorm is different, but I do want to say that. The responsiveness of Mohairan over the years is just unbelievable and. We, you know, in talking to all other town managers and mayors and everything, no one has the kind of service that we get. So I I'm glad that we're fine tuning and asking these questions. But just so you know, what's happened in the past.
That'll be for discount.
Yeah, but keep asking, keep, these are all good questions for the record, so keep asking.
The second, the second comment or question I had relates to, I think we had this discussion last year also, last year, which was the. The quantity of salt that was spread on the sidewalks uh after the, after the, I think after the February storm. Um and I'm not an expert, uh I mean, I would completely defer to your judgment. But I think, I think many of us in the town thought that it was excessive.
There was a little problem, which I agreed to address later. Up um like down the street from your house, more up the hill, you know, the main of the road, but. And we addressed that, I addressed that with my end, you know, we cleaned it up.
And I appreciate that.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to just.
That was like a two-block situation and uh, you know, again, it's, you know, that was. You know, a situation that I handled immediately, but.
Appreciate that.
The, and and then the. The good thing is that he Ed is always responsive. The the difficult thing is, you know, it's not as if, you know, we don't live in snow country. So the people that are actually, because you know, Ed doesn't pick up all the snow himself, right? So the the people, the drivers and and uh and people that he have, you know, they're not, this is like not part of their daily. Huh?
It's not Minnesota.
It's not Minnesota.
Oh, yeah.
In Minnesota, you know, so 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 it's good that we go over all this again, because you know, we are so responsive to our constituents. So we don't want one extra grain of salt on there going into the chest of paint. So you're asking the right questions and I'm just trying to write some comments. He's, he doesn't, they don't get any more money for how much salt is put down, but, which a lot of people have accused us of doing. Like, oh, they they're making more money because there's more salt down, that that's not true, but but it's.
Well, we're not paying by the ton of salt, so I mean, I think. The town is paying for the salt.
It it's really important for transparency to put, this is our one opportunity a year. To discuss this at length and put all these issues on the table, so continue.
Yeah, I if I, I think you answered somebody earlier, so you do not do pre-treatment, what is the reason we don't do pre-treatment?
I think it's terrible for the environment, I think that it's a complete waste of money and the environment. Because how many times do they call for something? And I know a lot of guys that do have pre-treat properties and then it turns out to be rain, you know? So what does that do? It washes down the storm sewer? I don't believe in pre-treatment.
So Ed, isn't it also true that the more, the, so the the more you have trucks on there, the more opportunity for damage? And doesn't, and every time that you you plow the street, there is some wear and tear on the streets, right? Is that, isn't that true, I mean, I think we can ask to bury that, but. But but certainly, certainly though, the more times you're out there, the more possibility for a skid and some damage, so. So it's like a fine line, I mean, it's a good question, but it's a fine line.
And my last, my last request uh is just. It would be, I think, uh good if, maybe you do it already, but I don't see it consistently. I don't know if your, your crews can wear high-vis vests. Uh they're usually out in pretty, so sometimes in stormy conditions. And uh and if they have, if they have high-vis vests, I think it could be a good safety thing to have for for people who are out. Or poor visibility.
Oh, yeah, Ed, that's a good idea, sells some swag. But related to that. I'm sorry, yeah. So related to that, and this is also important, is that we can always do better in have, you know. We need to communicate as much as possible. Because, because uh, you know. We get all these calls, like, when are they coming, when are they coming, and and you know. Ed gets a million calls from his different places, but we we always can do a better job in communicating. Maybe hour by hour, I don't know, but but there there's always room for improvement. Right, right, Ed.
Yes, sir.
There's always room.
I'm always here.
I I know. And you, sometimes you get no sleep for thirty-six hours. Okay, uh are there any comments? Council, you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, um a move approval of the contract proposal by the Mohairan Tree Experts for snow and ice removal for the town for the years twenty twenty-five, winter twenty twenty-six, and twenty twenty-seven.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
I think I.
Yeah, that'd be.
Okay, then we, I think I heard you, anyway, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you, thank you, Ed.
Okay, thank you, yes, sir.
And we will.
For your service.
We will, so if there is a major snowstorm, we will request you come. No, 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 that doesn't matter, no, that's, that's EJ, not me, but we will, we will, if there are major snowstorms, we will ask you to. Come in for like an oversight thing.
That's fine.
But thank you so much.
With the, with the whiz best. Yes.
So you've been doing this for twenty-some years, right?
I miss so, yeah.
Like twenty-five years.
Twenty. Anything more?
Yeah.
Uh probably twenty-five.
And and some, some of our residents have had the absurd comment that they're embarrassed about how good our streets are. We've gotten that comment before.
No.
You know.
Relative. There was a situation, yeah, ten, well.
There are bears, whatever that.
And we cleaned the whole town up, everybody got all excited and this, this one runs in, I said, where are you gonna go? The river road.
Right.
You know.
We drive from one end of the.
Like, first of all, nothing is a, they ain't going anywhere.
That is so true.
I'm the best ever moving guy on the planet.
Okay, thank you, Ed. Okay, the next item is, thank you, sir, thank you, sir. The next item is consideration of a proposal for construction of a pool fence, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we found RFP and sub proposals for construction of a new pool fence on the creek side. And then a new pool fence, the separated snack bar and the pool deck. And then for uh the entrances to the uh young waiting pool. Um as well as the removal of a chain link section for visiting park accessibility. Originally, when the town issued the RFP, it's a six-foot fence. But after an assessment conducted by the Montgomery County Department of Police. Uh the main feedback the police had uh regarding anything related to the fence. Was a uh, they said that they would recommend a seven-foot option. And so I went back to all the bidders and saw a seven-foot option as well. The town received nine bids, but a bid submitted by an auto contract and was rescinded. Uh in the table, I only included four bids, I left off the bid by long fence because uh the RFP. Included a required site visit that was not conducted, American pools for not submitting a seven-foot fence option. And then both I and L construction DMV gates, uh because they both exceeded the town's maximum budgeted amount. Which uh so in the table was for other companies, Superior Fence and Rail, who also contractors. SS Maryland Fence and the team at EHS. Uh similarly with this snow removal, uh I ranked them on cost, qualifications, quality of references, familiarity of Somerset, and sustainable procurement. Uh in the end, I've uh am recommending Superior Fence and Rail. Uh they're not the most uh inexpensive option, but they are the second most inexpensive. The primary reason I'm ranking them is out of all the RFPs submitted, they're the ones that, they're the proven track record, you have commercial. Uh and private pool facilities, um none of the other contractors. For example, in their references or uh in their, in their listings, they talked about building fences, but they didn't talk about building pool fences. And none of their references were uh pools, unlike Superior Fence and Rail. Uh though I will say, uh slight knock against it is unlike the other other bidders, which are, two of them are based in Montgomery County and the other in Baltimore County. It is based in Virginia, uh it's still in the Washington metropolitan area. Uh and then, uh happy to, I'm happy to answer any questions, and then Mark McAllister of Superior Fence and Rail is on Zoom to answer any questions.
Can can he um?
Yeah.
Show his video, welcome. Sir. Okay, thank, thank you for joining us tonight, and we will start the questions.
Yes, thank you for having me.
Welcome. Did you want to add anything to the report?
Uh no, that was a great summary by um town manager, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Council President Bar, do you have any questions?
Have you done other pool fences in Maryland?
Um so to, so to answer the question, um. Hopefully this is relevant, uh my wife and I live in Kensington, Maryland, I drive past the town of Somerset. Almost every day on my way in and out of uh friendship heights in Washington DC, so I. I am local, although my company is located in Lorton, Virginia, I'm a resident of um Montgomery County. Uh I personally have been in the commercial fence industry for fifteen years, so I have overseen the installation of. New uh pools for multifamily installations, hotels, rec centers, and the renovation of um. So my my company Superior Fence and Rail that I've been with for a year, we've. Um we've done several uh residential pools, I'm currently uh on-site working for a general contractor as a subcontractor. Making a fence around a pool in Ashburn, Virginia. Um so yes, we we are very well versed, me personally and our company. And all the pool requirements, KDA requirements, the uh, you know, limited access, the ticket spacing, all, all pool code uh requirements. Um very familiar to us, so we are more than capable uh to do a great job for you guys.
All right, thank you.
Did it.
That's it.
Councilor Heller, do you have any questions?
Um I have questions for EJ, but not him, so should.
Yeah.
Should they talk to you?
Yes, yes.
Um did I miss it, but have you checked their references and you talked to anybody else?
Yeah, I I talked with um Temple Emmanuel in Kensington. Uh and then an apartment complex in Alexandria. And and they said that uh they were happy with the work and would use them again.
And the ease of working with them.
Yeah, uh they, they didn't say, they, they have positive, positive things to say.
So I just have one question about American pools, because you know, we talked with them so many times about this. They just, did they just decide not to give you a bid, or they just, did they say anything to you, you think they missed it?
They didn't miss it because we were um, they confirmed receipt of their request, but uh they just never. Responded back.
Okay, their original bid for the lower fence, was that, was that, you know, a strong bid in terms of the cost?
Um it wasn't as high as some of the other ones, but it's, it was uh quite about uh about ten thousand more than this uh bid. And so and now it gone up for at least a couple of thousand.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Councilor Kumar.
Um well, Mister McAllister, thank you again for joining us. Just to clarify, have you uh worked in a setting like where our pool is? You mentioned some familiarity and you've done an onsite visit. You know, it's a, it's in a wooded area, there's some constraints in terms of accessing. You know, where the fencing is or the bulk of the fencing is, any. Any referential projects where you may have had to navigate a similar kind of, um, you know, constrained access?
Absolutely, so, uh, uh, no, as soon as we received the bid invite, I immediately contacted EJ and asked to be on site. Uh, to inspect all the conditions and make sure there was nothing abnormal. I didn't observe anything abnormal, uh, at all when inspecting the site, um. The only interesting condition is, uh, the need to keep the fence posts on the outside of the pool deck. And not attach them to the pool deck, which would be typical. So the need to run them outside the pool deck actually two feet longer than normal is unique, which is why I suggested. You know, lag bolting into the side of the pool deck, which is also something that I've handled before, um. You know, I, I really consider my expertise of coming up with unique solutions for unique conditions, so that's the only unique condition. That I observed while out there, but as far as access staging, um, the ability to get in and, and out. Remove, I, I didn't observe any, uh, unusual conditions that would prevent us. You know, from, uh, that would delay us in any way or hinder us.
Got it. And then do you, it is your crew, your crew, or do you use a subcontractor? Uh, in terms of for the direct, uh, uh, construction work?
If you hire Superior Fence and Rail to do this project, our crews will show up in Superior Fence and Rail shirts.
I'm so sorry, your voice got a little muffled there, I couldn't hear you. Do you mind?
I'm sorry, I, I have a tendency to mumble, I'm so sorry to do.
No, 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 it's the connection.
Uh, no, our crews will show up with Superior, um, branded, uh, PPE and, uh. And trucks and all of it, they are our crews. We, um, we, we, we trust, uh, we, we only hire the best, which is why we're the only five-star Google rated fence installer in the area. And so, uh, they're, they are our crews. We do not hire this out. We handle it ourselves to make sure it's done right.
Okay, thank you, Mark. And, uh, EJ, a quick question for you. What accounts for the perplexed scale difference between Superior and SS?
Um.
In your assessment?
As far as I can tell, um, it's mainly, uh. Quality of the materials and labor costs, um, in my assessment, but, um.
You mean the unit labor costs are higher for Superior?
I believe so, from what I, from what I've seen, yes. But, uh, part of the reason I didn't go with, uh, SS Maryland is also that they did not really include any sort of. Kind of cost breakdown, um, okay, just understood.
Then another question for you, you know, we've, um, have been working with American pools for a long time. We are, we, we have, we have some familiarity with them. They didn't submit a proposal because we increased the fence height, um. What's your, do you have any concerns or questions if you, you know, apart from a familiar vendor that we've been working with on this work? Or what's your, uh, sense of ability to execute on the project?
I think for this project, I feel very, very comfortable recommending Superior Fencing and Rails since, uh, it is. A specific part of the pool, um, versus a more wholesale project. Um, I would say that, um, I think. If American pools could do the work, of course, um, there have been good work in the past, but I. Am not worried right now about any sort of delay or change in service delivery by going with this company.
Sorry, I have one more question, sorry. Well, schedule, what timing of this, what are you thinking of? When does it start? When does it end? Any delays, any buffers for your budget?
So what's the, uh, contract is executed, first thing would be, uh, for the materials to be ordered, so I would connect with, um. Uh, Mark to get a timeline of the project because, uh, uh, kind of depending on if they have the. Materials in stock or need to, um. Need to, uh, wear them separately. The hope though is, uh, if possible, I'd like, uh, with the material, uh, materials. I'd like the project to be done before the end of the calendar year.
Who wants to ask the vendor, if he has a key of knowledge?
Yeah, Mark, do you want to h- help us understand, assuming we move forward favorably here, what? How do you envision the timing of the project, starting with the material acquisitions?
Sure, absolutely. Uh, if we were, um, we're honored enough to be able to do this project, um, for the council and for the town. We would, uh, because it, it is an industrial product with a one-inch picket and typical lead time might be. More than two weeks, uh, two week from, you know, issuing the PO on our behalf, I would add. I would estimate another week just because, um, it's, it's, it's. It's, um, it's non-stock in the, in the way that I'm trying to find the words. They would have to build it, all the parts are in stock for the manufacturer, it's just a matter of them having to weld it, so I would say. Uh, three weeks to, uh, take delivery of the material at our facility. Once we mobilize onsite, this would include the removal of the existing fencing. Uh, to complete the entire installation, I would put, uh, not to exceed, uh, two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Ravak.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Counselor Khan.
Uh, yes, so as I mentioned earlier, um, you know. I. I have, uh, I have concerns about the process, um.
Okay, so if you're talking about, if you're talking about debating. Right now is the time to ask question to the contractor.
So, um, or to EJ as well, right?
Yes, yeah.
So, uh, on the. On the question of the timeline, I just want to make sure that we're all saying the same thing. I think all of us would like to have a hard deadline for this to be completed, and if I hear correctly from you. Mr. McAllister and from you, EJ, you are confident that this will be done well before the pool season. Starts next spring.
And is it Memorial Day?
A week before.
Oh, will be done well before, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, the second question I had is, um, and I don't know whether this is, uh. To you, Mr. McAllister, or to you, EJ, are any county permits required, given the location?
Yes, county permit is required.
Okay, and are you familiar, Mr. McAllister, with the county permitting process for this time in the?
Yes, yep, absolutely. If this were, um, should you go with a, uh, seven-foot high fence? Typically, uh, removing and replacing at the same location and the exact same like and kind. Uh, typically does not require permit, um, if we do change the height, that will, uh, that will require permit, but also. More often than not, any pool fence, because of how sensitive you have to be regarding safety, also requires a permit. We go through the normal, the normal permitting process for any pool and rely on the county to tell us that there's no permit required. We'd like to take every precaution that we can, get to be sensitive around open bodies of water.
Yeah, especially the water, the water issue is important, because as you know, the creek, right? And assuming that the county has some regulations regarding construction, just so, just literally. Six or seven feet, uh, from the bags of the creek, so I just want to make sure that that's on your radar and. Um, I think, uh.
I, well, he'll get a chance.
Yes, yeah, just, just quickly, Mark, am I right that? The county will allow a fence up to six and a half feet without compliance with setbacks. If it's over six and a half feet, it's treated as a accessory structure and is subject to setbacks. So we'd have to make sure that the fence complies with county setbacks, is that right?
Ron, something tells me that when it comes to, uh, legal verbiage and code compliance, you may have one up to me, but, uh. Yes, I'm familiar with that verbiage and those requirements, um.
We might, might be fine, yeah, gotta be twenty-five feet from the front, eight feet from the side, twenty feet from the rear.
Yeah, when I did my, my onsite assessment and took my field dimensions of everything to double check, I did not measure, um. How the setback to the creek, which is, I'm familiar with that, so, um. Like you said, it, it might be fine, I, I didn't feel measured the setback from the creek, which I'm happy to do anytime, I can make myself available to come do that.
Did you, does that answer your question, Mr. Town Attorney?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just, just so the councils are aware, the, the county permit is required, as I understand, and we'll have to comply with. County setbacks if we're at seven feet, six and a half feet, we would not.
And you're still confident about the timeframe, recognizing that we have a permitting process to go through?
Yes, uh, in my, yes, in my experience with Montgomery County, um, they're, they're very good at expediting and the. The permitting process is, is quick and professional, yes.
Okay.
I wouldn't anticipate anything that would delay it that long, no.
All right, thank you. Um, EJ, just. You understand correctly that the, the gate in the front, the service gate or staff gate, I don't know what they call it. Is that already seven feet high?
It's about six point eight feet high.
Okay.
Uh, and so.
The police officer did not feel that that needed to be.
So I was gonna, uh, bring it up separately, but he did think it needed to be addressed, um. Just for time-wise, I didn't ask for the vendors to come back and take new measurements just for that particular fence. But I do plan to bring a proposal to the council just for that section of fence, uh, because there's, there's two components to it. One, they actually recommended that that particular fence be, uh, go all the way to the ceiling of the pool house. And then two, he recommended that we, um, completely get rid of the current key system and replace it with an electronic system. Uh, which will also require electrical work, so it's a bit, uh, not a whole lot more complicated, but it's a.
So will this be a supplement to this contract or a totally separate RFP?
It'll be totally separate.
For that gate.
Yeah. Yeah.
Are we talking about the gate?
He is for.
No, no, I, I'm, I'm, I'm done with that question.
I just want the clarification of the gate. Is that like the morning gate where we go in for morning swim? Yeah, that's little, that's, you know, you walk down to the pool.
Yeah.
It's the first gate, okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, my question was, since the police officer recommended seven feet for the rest of the perimeter. Um, you know, what do we do about that gate, which is the rest of the seven? Um, and then, now, I, I understand that the, what we're looking at is the perimeter. Creek side.
Hmm.
What about the perimeter? Facing Vinton Park on the side, behind where the picnic area is. And the fenced area at the back of the pool. Was he not concerned about the heights there?
No, he, he said that, uh, we should plan over the next, i- if we are able, we should plan over the next couple of years. To replace each section separately, uh, to bring it all into the same style that we're bringing this site into. So he said that it's good to start with the creek side, that's the area that needs it most. Um, and then as our budget allows to move to the other sections.
Um, when we discuss there's a, uh, reason why I'm public stuff.
Well done.
Okay, but it's not more cost effective to do everything now in one go?
Um, it might have some savings, but the, it would be out of the town's currently budgeted amount, um, so that, so, um. I could look into having that done and, uh, the council would like, they, uh, the council always, we appropriate funds.
Okay, any other questions?
Okay, thank you. Since there seem to be more questions, Counsel President Barr, do you have any further questions?
I have no further questions.
Counselor Member Hallard, I think you had another question.
No, I snuck it in.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Member Kumar, did you have another question?
EJ, just to clarify, are we in violation, uh, uh, in terms of Montgomery County rules of the fence facing the creek side?
Yes.
Okay, and is that the reason why we are currently prioritizing that construction?
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Ravak, did you have an additional question?
No.
Counselor Member Khan, do you have any questions?
Well, I had an issue that I wanted to bring up, but I don't know. Is it now?
No, 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 now is for questions, then you'll be debating. Could you have, do you have any more questions?
No, I don't have, I have, I have comments on the process.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, and, uh, now, is, are there any, uh, citizens that wanted to comment?
I believe, uh, Public Safety Chair Kumar Baswani may want to comment. Uh, Kumar, would you like to make any comments?
You're muted.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Would, well.
No, I have no comments. Did you ask me if I had comments?
No, I meant Kumar Baswani.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
Uh, just more questions rather than comments, uh.
Well, you're, you're allowed to ask questions.
Okay, uh, I don't mean to beat up on friendship heights again. But they did have a problem with the footings under a structure that they built. So I just hope that the town will, you know, clarify what kind of footings can be used, how deep they are.
And how, do you want, do you want to ask the contractor? He's, he's here.
Sure. Mark, uh, could you clarify how deep the footings will be? And, uh, how deep the posts will be in the ground?
And absolutely. So, um, like I mentioned earlier, it's a, it's a unique condition having to, um. Install the post on the outside of the pool deck rather than attach directly to it. Your typical, your typical post footing for a six-foot or a seven-foot high would be, uh, three, three feet deep into the ground. Um, and typically four times the diameter of a post, so for a two-and-a-half inch post, it'd be a minimum ten-inch diameter. Um, you know, footing at thirty-six inches deep. Uh, for my bid, uniquely trying to get ahead of, you know, any potential issues. In, in addition to including the, the post footing at ten inches by thirty-six inches. I also proposed to bolt the post into the side of the pool deck using, uh. Acring cement and threaded rod for additional support because, uh, the amount of deflection, you know. Over that height, I just, I thought might create a, a gap, potential hazard for anybody. You know, at the edge of the pool deck there, so the footing will be ample, more than able to hold the fence, but I was worried about the deflection. So for additional support, it'll also be bolted into the side of the pool deck.
Okay, uh, I'm not an expert on fences, so I'm just, you know, asking the question. The other thing, uh, is, is ninety-six inch on centers, uh, for the posts. Is that adequate, or, I mean, is that like a standard?
Uh, yes, yes, that's, that's, I don't mean to interrupt, yeah, uh, yes, that's for a commercial or industrial, um. Ornamental fence, uh, so this would be if, whether it's vinyl or aluminum or steel, eight foot on center is the industry standard. Ten foot on center is the industry standard for chain link fences. But, uh, eight, eight foot on center is industry standard for, for all of the styles, specifically the one that you're proposing to have installed.
Okay, great, thank you very much. That's, that's the only questions I had.
Okay, thank you.
She doesn't actually want to be coming.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so at this point, I bet closes the, the public comment, and now it's turned over. To the Counsel President to lead to the discussion and decision.
All right, so, uh, before we propose a motion, I think Ravak has indicated that you wish to talk to us a bit about. The process involved here, so go ahead, your floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Ravak. Um, so as I said in the very beginning, um, I am very much in favor of this project. I think it's a public safety priority, uh, and it should be done as soon as possible, um. I am. Not in a position to. Vote in favor of the contract, not because of the recommendation. But because, to be honest, I didn't have enough time to read all the proposals. Um, you know, this, uh, this packet was only sent late this morning. Um, even as a retiree, I had other things I had to do today. Uh, and I don't feel that as a council member, I've done my duty, uh, reading through the full package. It's, it's a lot in there, uh, and I think it is, you know. I think it's important that as council members, we, we do that due diligence, um. I fully, uh, you know, I, I, uh, as I said, I fully understand the urgency of the matter. I, my preference really would have been, uh, for us to, uh, allow a couple of extra days, um. For us to have a look, but also to allow any public input. Um, I really don't think that, uh, you know, couns- the council should be approving, uh, things like this. Uh, on the same day that it circulated, and that's, that's inadequate time for public input. Um, there might not be any, but at least we should give people the opportunity to do so, and I don't think, you know, a day is enough like this. So that is why I had asked earlier, and I understand that, you know, that motion didn't carry, but. Uh, I really want to put it on the record that, uh, that I feel very uncomfortable with being asked to. Vote on a contract, and I did not really get a chance to, to, to fully, uh, read through. Uh, each of the four proposals that have been, uh, presented. Um, I think just in, in, also in that vein, um. I appreciate very much the, the effort that, that EJ has made, uh, both in this one and the snow and ice removal now to have. A much more transparent, uh, presentation. a much more transparent presentation with rankings and various criteria. I think it's excellent. But I think this package is also not thorough enough, in the sense, let me give you example of a couple of things. You know, the package does not have references except for one. So it's fine to say the quality of references, but in the package, I, again, admittedly, I didn't really have time to go through it in detail, but only one of the four had a list of references. The others didn't. You know, I would like to understand, I would have liked to have understood better, there are sort of almost like non-comparable components to this. Some talk about six latches, others talk about one latch. One has a 200-gallon storage, the other one is five-by-seven shed. I think it would have been useful to have a little bit more presentation of comparability of the, of the proposals. And one proposal from Colossal, frankly, has no information at all, and I don't even know how this could have been ranked. So it's a bad
So what I would like to suggest is that Councilor Khan, make a motion to table this item to a time certain, which I suggest would be right before the work session on November 17.
You want to introduce this again?
I mean, that's what I, that's what I would suggest. Just to give a little time.
I make the motion that we hold off approving this
That you table the item to, and when would you want to table it to?
No later, that we, no later than when we can have a special council meeting at the next work session.
Okay, is there a second on that?
Okay, so that fails for a second. Continue, sir.
All right. I'll move approval of the first name as a contractor.
Superior.
Superior.
Thank you. That proposal for the construction of seven-foot pool fence.
Is there discussion?
I'll just answer Rohit a little bit. I have not seen anything in the other proposals that suggests that they are in any way as strong as the one that EJ has selected. I we have grilled you quite substantially in this meeting, and you've answered all our questions well, and I'm more confident in your proposals as a result of that. Thank you.
Not, I'm not debating that particular point. I'm simply saying that in the six hours between the time this was circulated and the time of this council meeting and the time that I received it and the time of this council meeting, I cannot make that same judgment that you did. I did not have time to read it.
Well, for what is
That required
In the spirit of discussion, in this motion in front of us, I do, I do agree with Rohit. That is too speedy for turnaround. But I also, you know, your observation, Rohit, that I think, EJ, you done a very good job in trying to present us the information. It's significantly better than what we're used to, frankly. You've made a lot of decisions in the past. I thought Mr. McAllister's presence here and fielding our questions was, you know, was the kind of input that I needed at this stage. You know, I do think that this is a remnant of the pool construction work that we did that's long overdue and and so I'm generally in favor for us to move this forward. But I, I hear you, Rohit, and I share your concern that it was a very quick turnaround of our plans.
But let me also add that let me also add that we
Shouldn't be the norm.
Let me also add that, that, you know, this is what the process is about, that the issues that you raised, the questions you asked, the information can still be provided by the town manager.
That's true.
No, no, I absolutely, I completely appreciate it.
So, but that's what, that's, you know, that's the process and, and the reason, you know, the mayor with veto approval of the president sets the agenda. And, and it was my feeling that with this and the pool contract, that the council wanted to move forward quickly on these. So, and that's why we have a process that can put a stop to it. So, so you made your case. Apparently, you're not on the winning end of that, but we will try to address the concerns that you, and, and we always try to not put things on agenda without, you know, without proper information. But, so that's all I can say. Is there further discussion?
I would just like to say that I am sympathetic to what you're saying, Rohit, and I would think in the future, we need to, to be, to do this maybe better. But I also, you know, you tell me, EJ, but I trust that you have done all this homework and that you are very satisfied with this, this, this bid, which is why you put it on, you ranked it first and put it on the table for us. And I'm assuming you have done all, all that legwork before tonight. And yes, I agree, I did try to read this while I was, you know, coming home tonight, but I couldn't open it, you know. So I was just hoping that everybody else got your riddance. And, but I, I just, I, I, it's a comments last question, that I believe you have done this homework for us. Am I right?
I feel, I have read through all the proposals and compared them. I am very happy with the recommendation.
And if that's the case, I think we should pass this.
Okay, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. And now is there, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you. And happy and see everybody on November 17.
Thank you, Mr. McAllister. Thank you, Ron.
Good night.
Thank you so much for having me.
Clock has started, Mr. McAllister.
All right.